Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call to order the Sacramento County Planning Commission for April 24th, 2023. Lydia, if you'll please call the roll.
Absolutely. Commissioners Borja, Raythal.
Here.
Corona Savagnano, Tatishi.
Here.
And Wong.
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
If you all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, and to the Constitution, our Constitution, and to the Constitution of this world.
And if you'll please make the announcements for this evening.
Yes. The county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The county does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In-person public comments will be taken first. To make a public comment, please complete a speaker request form and hand it to the clerk. The chairperson will call your name when it's your turn to make a comment. If you plan to make a teleconference public comment, you will be kept on mute until the chairperson calls for a teleconference public comment. The clerk will unmute you when it's your turn, and you may begin your public comment. You may also send a written comment to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record.
All right. We have two items on the agenda this evening. We are going to hear them both as contested. If you'll please call item number one.
Item number one is PLNP 2020-00131. It's for Use Permit Amendment and Design Review. Located at the southeast corner of the Hazel Avenue and Cedar Village Drive intersection in the Fair Oaks community, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
We can get the presentation up.
Could you pull presentation number one up, please, for Grace Bible Church?
Oh, here. Okay, perfect.
It's not anywhere. There we go.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. My name is Irving Huerta, Assistant Planner and Project Manager for the Grace Bible Church Expansion.
Just give us one moment, folks. The one in our packet did have a November 14th date on it also.
Do you have?
There were two that should be.
Okay.
Yeah, there were two. And I'm going to send this over right now to them.
Okay, perfect. And we have it in front of us, too. So we could start the presentation, and then we could show the slides for the record. We'll just hang out.
Okay, just making sure.
Thanks, Lydia.
Perfect, okay. So again, my name is Irving Huerta, Assistant Planner and Project Manager for the Grace Bible Church Expansion. Before I begin my presentation, I do want to remind you that this project was first heard by the Planning Commission back on November 14th, 2022, and the item was continued. Today's presentation, we'll go ahead and resummarize again, the entitlement request, brief summary of what occurred at the last Planning Commission hearing, an overview of the applicant's elevations submission, and design review analysis, and lastly, the staff To start us off, the applicant is requesting the following. It is a Use Permit Amendment to allow for the expansion of an existing church by increasing the assembly capacity up to 800 persons, the expansion of a private K through 12 school to allow up to 300 students, future construction of approximately 25,000 square feet in new buildings and additions to replace existing module buildings, and the construction of new parking. The request also includes a design review to comply with the Sacramento County-wide To summarize what had happened at the November 2022 Planning Commission, so the Planning Commission voted for yes, zero no, and one absent, to continue the item to a date uncertain to allow the applicant to provide additional information, particularly on the following: to develop building elevations to incorporate into the report package. Commissioners did express concerns at the meeting about not having the building elevations included into the report package, and had asked the applicant to respond as to why they hadn't done so, as well as the phasing efforts by the church campus expansion. So the applicant clarified that the church's expansion of the campus would take many years to accomplish, so they planned to complete design reviews when each portion was ready to move forward. So the proposed project was originally reviewed by the DRAC back in February 2022, and at the DRAC, the design review request was just limited to site design and did not review any building elevations, citing that, again, church expansion would take place gradually. The DRAC did find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. Then the applicant, after the Planning Commission hearing in November 2022, submitted the requested building elevations in December of 2022 to staff. Staff determined that a review by the Design Review Administrator of the building elevations would be sufficient. The Design Review Administrator provided a revised DRAC Letter Attachment 4 dated March 1st, 2023, stating the following: The DRAC did not review the additional building elevation exhibits, and that staff is forwarding the exhibit to Planning Commission without a recommendation regarding compliance with the countywide design guidelines. And those elevations that were submitted by the applicant are attached to this addendum package, Attachment 5, Exhibit M. So the next two slides, we're going to take a look at the exhibits. As you can see on this slide right here, this is the proposed sanctuary plus fellowship building expansion, as well as remodeling. And then the next slide depicts the future fellowship classroom/office building. Moving on to the staff recommendation, planning and environmental review staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the following: To determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act is adequate and complete, and adopt the mitigated negative declaration. Approve the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. Approve the Use Permit Amendment subject to findings and conditions. Find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines subject to findings and conditions. This concludes the end of my presentation. Both staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huerta. Questions for staff this evening? All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant up, if you'd like to address the commission. And I'll have the clerk get you sworn in. If there's any other members of the team that will be speaking or answering questions tonight, we'll get them all sworn in at the same time, if good. Can we swear item one and two at the same time?
I know.
I like that.
You know what? I don't see why we couldn't swear them in. Is that okay?
No, no, we do them separately.
Okay, we'll just do item number one, sorry.
That's why he's here.
Thanks, Council.
On the straight and narrow. Okay, if you'll please raise your right hands. Any appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth, so help you God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm? Okay, if you'll state your names for the record and make the statement that I have been sworn.
Andre Baranov, I have been sworn.
Brian Lebec, I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Yeah, are there? Thank you, by the way. Thank you for seeing us again, and are there any questions that you guys have?
Any questions for the applicant this evening? All right, looks like a good smittle. There's no questions on it, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to public comments, and first off, we'll have Robert and Michelle Crooks. Please proceed.
Hi, I'm here to object about the parking lot that's pertaining to, I'm closest to the water tank to the east, and I'm the last property there, and we've had that area fenced in. I'm here to fight for easement rights. We've had that fenced in by wood to the top of that hill since 1996. We have maintained it, we have landscaped it, we have oak trees we put on it that are fully grown. If you go to the pictures and take a look, you'll see. We have rose bushes, we have everything there, including sprinklers. The parking lot is wanting to come into that backyard, be up about as high as where you are up this hill.
In elevation.
In elevation, and basically wipe away our backyard at that point, what we've taken care of, maintained, and.
Been living there.
Yeah, I've been living there for 32 years. I knew the previous owners. My mother sold the previous owners the home. I grew up with the previous owners, and I've been in this area for 56 years. I haven't been able to get anybody to hear me to come out. I've objected this several times, including by registered mail to Grace Bible, addressing who was the person in charge at that point, and I'm sure he's here. Was I want to say it's John? Where is he at? John Cassidy, and that letter went out June 20th of 2020. I've had nobody come out and look, because this is, I have several complaints, one, another one, I only have three minutes, but we've been flooded out by the church where they took the blacktop, ran the piping down to our culvert and flooded our houses three different times with no resolve. I couldn't do anything about it, I couldn't get help about that. We ended up getting the county to put in a junction box on our property at the end to be able to absorb more water, and put in a drainage at the back of the property, which is at a telephone pole area, next to the water tank. Pretty much, we've had a hill behind our house since 95, and draining issues. I've, friends drained, I've had companies come out and put drains throughout the property to stop us from flooding the best we could, but, yeah, if they elevate it any higher, there's going to be no privacy for any of the neighbors there. I mean, basically, anything going on on Hazel, I don't mind the parking lot and going there, I don't mind a sound wall going in, but I do mind it coming into my property, destroying everything I've had for the last 30 years, coming down that hill, and being a parking lot that's even nosier and louder than it's ever been. The school expansion, I could disagree with it all I want, I'm pretty sure it's going through, but the noise factor that's gone in this neighborhood has just been unbelievable in the last, in the last 15 years. It just keeps getting louder, louder, louder. What's going to continually grow? The last thing I want is it getting closer into my home through the backyard, and that is my concern today, is fighting for easement rights. You know, it's not like it was a cattle fence. The cattle fence went up for about a year, year and a half, and then immediately I put a wood fence up to make it even quieter, and to stop the transits going down the culvert that's right along adjacent to the, to that water tank. There's a culvert that comes down, where transits come there for years and years, they shoot up, they defecate. We've maintained even that property going in there, cleaning out, removing it, and it should be the church's responsibility to keep that clean over the last 30 years. Basically, that used to be a field that went straight across before the, Farrakhs Water District came in, dug it out, put the tank in, pushed all the dirt to the side, and said the church can have it. And that's basically where we were. The first minister that was there was Jared.
I was going to wrap it up, make a closing statement.
Okay. Bottom line is, I'm here for easement rights, would like to have Planning Commission somebody to come out, take a look, and see what even what I'm talking about. This isn't over exaggerated, at least review this and see what I'm talking about. Yeah, the water, the water problems on Arobee, maybe look at that as well. You know, we haven't flooded for the last three, four years, but if we ever had a big storm, we get excess from the church, plus our own. Yeah, if you come to our house now, I've got sandbags at the garage right now.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Thank you for hearing me, much appreciated.
All right, and do we have other public comments this evening?
We have none.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant back up to address the public comments.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Mr. Brooks, are you the same person that came, that logged into the CPAC? Okay, excellent, excellent. I'm glad, thank you for coming, and I'm glad we get to talk again.
Yeah, I've had issues with getting some of the responses to come in and respond. The last one that came in came in May 4th, it was actually the meeting.
All right, guys, we're going to keep this, we're on public record, so we'll have you address the comments.
Thank you. Yeah, so we actually have been working extensively with RFE Engineering, now CWE Engineering, to treat or to address the issue of drainage, and we have developed not only a Level 3, but also a Level 4, design level study for the drainage issue, and unfortunately, Arobee is going to get reworked quite a bit, and there's going to be an installation of additional drainage facilities to address just the issue. So, yeah, we have known about the drainage issue, Mr. Brooks has brought it up during CPAC, we've been working with engineers. In fact, we tried to submit the initial construction documents, and we were refused because we don't have CUP approval, so, yeah. With regard to the fence question, I think Mr. Brian Lebec can speak to that a little bit better, but we've made it a point to make sure that the new sound wall is actually going to be in the same place where the current fence is. So while Mr. Brooks has been using that slope that is actually the church's legal property at the moment, and that's fine, the church is from, and Brian, I'll need you to speak to this, but the church is, from my understanding, is okay with their continued use of the same without disturbance, so we would just be taking out the fence, putting in a sound wall. Is that?
Yeah, was there anything else? Is that correct? I think you mentioned you may need to confirm that, but.
Yes, that is correct. In fact, that, I think the sound wall is 20 feet off of the property line, and that back 20 feet, we've permitted Mr. Brooks and his neighbor to use for many years. In fact, we even sent a letter to him granting him that right to use.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Any other questions for the applicant this evening? All right, thank you, gentlemen. And we'll move on to commission deliberation.
I would be willing to move staff recommendations.
Second.
All right, we have a movement and a second for staff recommendation. Any further discussion before we call for a vote? All right, Lydia, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Raythal.
Yes.
Tatishi.
Yes.
And Wong.
Yes.
And the motion carries with those members present.
All right, thank you. That concludes item number one this evening, and we'll move on to item number two.
And for item number two this evening, we have PLNP 2021-00172. It's for a Community Plan Amendment Rezone Use Permit and Design Review located at 2128 Marconi Avenue, 318 feet west of Howe Avenue in the Arden Arcade community, and the environmental document is a notice of exemption.
If we could get the PowerPoint?
We do. Metro, item number two, please. There we go. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David O'Ray Oros, Associate Planner, the Project Manager for the Marconi Auto Sales The property is located at 2128 Marconi Avenue, approximately 325 feet west of the intersection of Howe Avenue and Marconi Avenue within the Arden Arcade community. It totals 0.42 acres and is currently zoned LC with an approximately 2,000 square foot existing structure on site. Community context, so to the north is single and two-family residential, the east is auto sales and repair, south is multifamily residential, and the west is single-family residential. So some site and entitlement history, the site was originally developed as a single-family residence in 1934 between the 1950s and 60s. A series of lot divisions did occur, resulting in the current 0.42 acre parcel. In 1983, the Board adopted a resolution initiating public hearings to consider an amendment to the subject site's community plan and zoning designations from BP to LC, and in 1984, the Board adopted the ordinance changing the subject site's community plan and zoning designations. Excuse me. So the entitlement request is a community plan amendment and rezon to change the community plan and zoning designations to GC for the purposes of auto sales. A use permit to allow auto sales within the GC zoning district is also requested, as well as a design review. Here we have the site plan, and here is the landscape plan. The landscape plan proposes expanding the front street adjacent planner and placement of trees consistent with county landscape standards. A new landscape buffer is also proposed on the property's interface with the southern adjacent multifamily development. And here are the elevations. The elevations are currently existing, but interior TI would be completed to allow for the office associated with the new use. So the Arden Arcade CPAC did meet on February 24th and recommends that the Board approve the requested entitlements, and the DRAC also met on February 24th and recommends that the project be found in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan, however, it does require rezon in order for the use to be consistent with the zoning code. The project is inconsistent with the Arden Arcade Community Plan in that it conflicts with Goal 3, Objective 8 of the plan, which calls to limit the expansion and encourage the reduction of space committed to auto commercial uses, limiting the introduction of new operations to the area already committed to auto sales uses. As the project requires a rezon of an existing property in the zone which precludes auto sales, the project is inconsistent with this policy. The Board of Supervisors zoned the property LC with the intent of the subject parcel being used as a transition from the more intense GC uses to the east and the BP zoned property to the west. The introduction of GC uses on the subject property would negate the property's ability to serve as such a buffer. So with that, staff recommends denial of the project and that the Planning Commission make the following recommendations to the Board: Recognize the exempt status of the request under Section 15301, Class 1 of CEQA; Deny the community plan amendment and rezon request to change the community plan designation and zoning designation from LC to GC; Deny the use permit for auto sales; And find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. And with that, that concludes my presentation. The applicant is also in attendance.
Thank you so much. Questions for staff this evening? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll invite the applicant up, and this time, we really will swear you in, all in. If you may answer some questions, yeah, go ahead and get sworn in.
Okay, and so the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth, so help you God? And if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, if you'll please state your names for the record and make the statement, I have been sworn. If we can start with Mr. Holloway first, please.
Chair, members of the commission, Brian Holloway, Holloway Land Company, representing the applicant, Mr. Sharif, and JTS Engineering, and we're going to do this old school today because couldn't figure out how to get the exhibits onto a flash drive.
Mr. Holloway, could you just say I have been sworn?
I've been sworn. Sorry, I thought I did that.
Please proceed.
Apologies. So first thing I'd like to do is thank David O'Ray Oros, our planner, for a very thorough staff report, so thank you, David, for getting us through the process. We are before you tonight because somewhat of a unique process. I didn't attend, but Mr. Siddiqui and the property owner went to the Arden Arcade CPAC in a workshop forum, and the purpose of the workshop was to ask the CPAC what they thought was the best use for this property. Property owners had it for a while, and it's numerous unsuccessful businesses there. And the CPAC did agree, did think, and proposed that this was the proper use, and then later on, they met in a formal hearing and did unanimously approve this use, recommend approval for this property. The site is about under a half an acre and has an office building, and as you can see, is almost completely paved, and as I mentioned, it's had several businesses there that were not successful. And the problem has been that with unsuccessful businesses and leaving the property mostly vacant, there's been a lot of vandalism and drug use and homeless here, hypodermic needles, crack vials, other drugs, break-ins, and numerous break-ins, as you can see. So this is. So this is, this is one of the problems with having a business that's, a location that just is not successful. The property, interestingly enough, is actually split between the city and the county. The north side is city, and the south side is county. And this is a copy of the zoning map. And you can see that all the properties in the city across the street are former residences that have been converted to other uses. And you can see that on the county side, there's a mix of uses and a mix of zoning, as opposed to heavy commercial uses in the city property across Marconi Avenue. And the result is that if you look at the land uses across Marconi on the city property, there are several massage parlors, there are fortune tellers, there are bootleg auto repair, and sort of less-than-favorable uses there. Whereas on our side, we have retail, commercial, we have a gas station, car wash, food center, auto repair, and tire sales. This is this site. And then we have sort of a homemade residence with non-approved vehicle storage out front, and then a care home and a beauty-related business further down. So it's kind of a mix, and we also have single-story multifamily behind us. So one of the things I wanted to mention is that we felt that the property, as you saw, is very heavily paved. It's very much an impervious surface. And so we felt that we really needed to soften the look of the facility. So we're adding a tree line along the back, which would provide a buffer to the multifamily uses to the back. And then also, we're adding trees in the front and along this common property line to screen the view in the future and to just soften the whole previously paved site. Staff has made a good point in their staff report in that we are not compliant with one of the adopted policies of the 43-year-old Arden Arcade community plan. And there are 52 policies and objectives in that plan, of which 15 relate to commercial uses. And of the 52 objectives, we comply with are unrelated to 51 of them. We really only don't comply with the one. And I think what I'm trying to say is that Arden Arcade has changed, it's improved, and it's grown since 1980. And to be honest, the CPAC got it right. They got it right for now and for today. And they didn't base their decision on a policy that was created 43 years ago. Doesn't relate to today. So what we have for you tonight is an appropriate use that has no neighborhood opposition, that conforms to the immediate neighborhood, is unanimously supported by the CPAC and the DRAC, will be a successful family-run business, and is supported by all but one of the Arden Arcade community plan objectives. We think this will improve the appearance of this portion, this small portion of Marconi Avenue, and it will definitely provide much-needed security and cleanliness. And I look forward to your deliberations.
Thank you.
And your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway. Questions for the applicant this evening?
I have one. So when you did the, I'll say the workshop component, was it just with the CPAC, or was it broader members of the Arden Arcade community when you did the pre-CPAC meeting?
Yeah, I didn't attend, but my understanding is that CPACs nowadays, there are, the advertisement goes out. Is that correct? Do they send the 500-foot advertisement out for the CPAC meetings? I've had that happen, so I wasn't sure on this one.
Yeah, so they do. This is Jessica Brandt with Planning and Environmental Review. We don't have record of a workshop, and so that's why it doesn't appear in the staff report. I don't know whether it was a...
I was, I was... Yeah.
Yeah, if the applicant can provide more, it might have been a more informal workshop.
And Sirif, could I just ask you to state your name for the record and make this statement, "I have been sworn"?
I have been sworn. Hatem Sharif.
Please step up.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, like if I remember, I met with one of the neighbor next door, and he was so excited, the one next door. And he said, "Oh, I got this letter in the mail." You know, like, "You guys going to workshop? You guys gonna get a car lot to make it auto car lot?" And with all of the stuff, you know, like we had, you know, like with all these tenants and all of these, you know, like can't keep a good tenant in there. He was so excited, and he said, "When you gonna bring it?" And even last time, you know, like this is, it's, but that's if we answer the question, I want to keep going. But I think they did. Good?
Okay. Javet, can you clarify what happened? Did you have a workshop, and then they voted? How did that come about?
Okay, and if we can have you, sir, please state your name for the record and make this statement, "I have been sworn".
My name is Javet Siddiqui. I'm with JTS Engineering. My address is 1808 J Street in Saatamano.
Oh, no, that's fine. Thank you, sir. Okay.
I was at the workshop meeting where we presented the project. And at that time, there was encouragement that we should make the formal application. And we followed it up with a formal application. And there has been no opposition anywhere.
I guess my question is, when we did that workshop that we're continuing to call a workshop, was it, who was at it? Was it notice to the neighborhood? Was it notice just to the CPAC? Who was in attendance, I guess?
I do not know. I know I was there. And I do not know who was notified. He, my client is saying that his neighbor had contacted him because he received the notice, but I do not know.
Okay, so I'm uncertain whether there was actually an official CPAC workshop, so, but there was an official CPAC hearing, and they did, they did vote unanimously for the project, so. Hope that helps clarify. It's a good question.
I just want to make sure I know, in theory, what, as much as I can, on kind of the chronology of this and everything, so. But I do know that the CPAC did take a vote on it, so thank you.
And I guess the question I have is, I know in some cases, the CPACs, the 500-foot advertisement goes out prior to the CPAC. And then I've also been to CPACs where an appointed member actually goes door-to-door in the neighborhood to get comment and thoughts from the neighborhood. So I wasn't, I didn't attend this one, so I don't know which of those processes was at play.
Thank you.
So just looking at the record online, January 26, 2021? January 28, 2021, there is a record of a CPAC workshop. That was early CPAC workshop for future use of property at 2128 Marconi Avenue. With Mr. Siddiqui's, Mr. Siddiqui's name on it.
You scared me again. Any other questions from the commission? Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move to public comment.
No public comments?
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to deliberation.
So I'll just start. I've typically tried to adhere to the community action plans or as they've been made, but I am sympathetic towards the fact that this one has not been updated the way that kind of Fair Oaks or Carmichael's or some of the other communities has been updated in a more recent timeline. This is an older dynamic, and I do think that area, especially right there, has changed over the years. I appreciate in confirming that we've actually done a workshop with the community at the CPAC and then the CPAC's dynamic. If that's really kind of the principle, and I'll ask this maybe to staff, if the real objection is just that we're not in conformity to the Arden Arcade community plan, if that's really the only kind of major barrier or hurdle from the county's perspective, then I'm inclined to actually move forward with supporting the project as is proposed.
Yeah, I'll give my thoughts real quick. I just, to me, when I look at it at a project level, I don't see a whole lot of concerns. When I look at it from the planning documents level as staff has done, I understand the idea that this was intended to create a buffer and that without a rezone, it is an issue. And I do have some slight concerns that what happens if the auto sales doesn't go forward, right? Then we do have general commercial that's bordering on an RD-30. And so it does open it up to more intensive uses. That being said, the general commercial that's right to the east of that already borders that RD-30. And so I think it's a challenge for me to say that this smaller parcel is going to make much of a difference, being a buffer for that RD-30 that already borders another GC area. So while this use, I can fully support. And I think that's kind of where I stand. I do have some slight hesitations, but on the whole, on the balance of it, I have to say that I think it's good for the community, and I'd be inclined to also to side with the CPAC. Commissioner Wong. Sorry, somebody actually used their technology, and it confused me.
Well, we all know I'm a rule follower, so, um, you know, I guess I have a question. Maybe you guys are, would know the answer to this. Do we know why the, oops, I scrolled too far. Do we know why the community plan hasn't been updated in so long? Is there, I mean, does anyone have a...
I mean, it's been, it's been a while, but I think it was, there was an update in, I think the staff report says, '06, and I remember going through that. So I remember the old, old version. And maybe I'm thinking of the community action plan?
So it's the community action plan, yeah. So the community plan proper has not been updated. Yeah, but the community action plan was adopted, but as an appendix. And unfortunately, the community action plan in this case isn't, doesn't give us a whole lot of direction. So that's why we reverted back to the community plan proper.
Okay, so I guess when they were adopting the community action plan, could they have also updated their, the community plan? Was there that opportunity there? Or, I guess I'm trying to figure out, like, was there a deliberate reason why it's been 43 years?
My involvement with the different community action plans in some of District 3, a lot of them are limited in scope and were not the whole area. They were targeted zones that needed some updating because it was really looking at those actionable items on how do we design community differently. So I don't believe, when the Arden Arcade went through theirs, that I would say this section of kind of Marconi and Howe was their primary, like, focus area for the action plan. And maybe I'm wrong on that, but I didn't think that was their primary focus area. It wasn't an overlay of the entirety of all of Arden Arcade. It was targeted zones for those action plans.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. I'm just, I guess I was just trying to figure out if maybe there was a deliberate reason why, you know, something wasn't touched, or maybe it was overlooked, and it sounds like it was because, in this case, the, they were focused on other things, basically. You know, similar to our chair, you know, I do have, you know, some concern since it's not consistent with it. You know, and I guess I would just like to point to, you know, staff report, page eight, where, oops, no, I'm sorry, not page eight. Page nine, where it's talking about the rezone criteria, and it says that the GC zoning district generally provides for more intensive uses and lowers the level of hearing body in instances where a use permit is required. Several of the uses permitted in the GC zoning district are characterized by noise, toxic fumes, light, and negative aesthetics, which are not appropriate for adjacency to residential or office uses. So similar to the chair, you know, I was concerned that if the, if this auto sales business does not work out, it is opening the door for more intensive uses. And especially when the applicant pointed out that at least it looked like that there's a care home right next door. I could have been reading the maps, or the maps that were displayed wrong, but it looked like there's a care home next door. And it's my understanding that, you know, sometimes care homes do tend to house some of our more sensitive populations. And especially, you know, when it comes to, you know, toxic fumes, that's a little concerning to me, so.
I think there is one other property in between the care home and this lot here. It's the Business Professional House. I'm not sure what it is in reality. There is no active, I talked to a staff about it earlier. There's no active business license at that residence, but it is zoned Business Professional. But you can see it on the, on the site map. There is, I'm just saying, there is one other property in between there that is a buffer between it and the cares, and the care home.
Thank you for that clarification.
I'm not sure if that addresses all the concerns, but just wanted to, there, I think on map, really on the first map, you can see there's one other lot that's there.
On the first map? Oh, there we go. Okay, so the care home?
The care home's on that corner lot.
On the corner, got it, okay. I mean, I think those kind of represent my concerns for now.
Commissioner Borja?
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate my fellow commissioners for extending. I also have similar, not necessarily concerns, but more so feedback, and as the applicant have shared for the record, the fact that this property is adjacent to other GC uses already and multiple different businesses in the area. I was contacted by the applicant. I met with the applicant via Zoom separately. And after that meeting, I went and drove over to the neighborhood and parked my car right at the, right at the gas station, just to kind of gauge what really, what level of noise. And it's already a very, very noisy intersection. So I'm not, I'm not too exactly sure if car, additional car doors opening and closing. And I have been told by applicant that they are going to be conducting them during business hours, so I'm not too sure if that additional noise will be there. But I'm sympathetic to the applicant because, you know, they're trying to at least put a viable business in the community and have had, you know, different ample opportunities to at least put a business there. And I think that if we have, you know, we have a chance to support a family business here, mitigate some of the negative impacts that, you know, our staff have put in there. And if the only issue is that it's not an LC or a GC or that it attempts to be a buffer zone, I think I'm more willing to support the project at this time. So, yeah, those are my two cents.
I'll move the project forward, or approval of the project, to the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve in a second. I'm going to ask Ms. Brandt to weigh in on what findings we should update.
Yeah, so Jessica Brandt with Planning and Environmental Review. We do have material available for you to review in support of a recommendation for approval. I believe we have the use permit. What else do you have?
Yeah, we have the use permit, the rezone ordinance, and the attachment to findings and conditions.
And so the attachment to findings and conditions, the findings are not filled in, correct? Are they filled in? Okay. So what we would ask is that the council look at those documents. We can walk you through the findings that are in attachment to. And if those seem sufficient, then that could be your basis to recommend approval. If you'd like that, we can go ahead and pass those out.
That'd be great. Yeah, well, we'll get the applicant to review one at the same time, maybe.
It's already down, as far as it'll go. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so introducing into the record today, we have three items. The first is a draft use permit, which would go to the Board of Supervisors as a recommended document. Would you like to continue it? Okay. The second item is a draft zoning ordinance, and that would also go to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation for approval. And then the third item is our attachment to findings and conditions, and this would substitute in for the findings that we had provided for a recommendation of denial. So for the recommendation of approval, we do include the findings that would support that recommendation. And I don't necessarily need to read them all here, but I do want to have a moment for everyone to take a look at them, make sure they're comfortable. Bill, do you feel like we need to read them in?
Can we put them on the screen?
Yeah.
Can I get a copy? I only got attachment to, I didn't get the other documents.
So these are findings that relate to the environmental, California Environmental Quality Act. The conditional use permit, which is stating that the use permit would not be, can't read it, it's too old. The approval of the use permit would not be detrimental or injurious to properties in the area, and it lists out our standard conditional use permit findings. Again, with the design review as well. And then the rest of the document is conditions related to the approval. So if the commission would like to move forward with these documents?
Sorry, Bill?
Thanks.
If the commission would like to move forward with your recommendation based on these documents, staff has these available for you.
Well, I'll just note that it looks like on finding number three, sorry, 1B, it's saying that the project is inconsistent with that community plan provision. So I think it's right to address that in your findings, but you probably want to do more than say it's inconsistent and leave it at that. You need to find a reason to justify why this is okay, given that, in light of that objective. That's how it's, I think, characterized as a goal or objective. So, and how do you do that? Well, I mean, there's a few ways. I mean, in terms of, like, general plan objectives or community plan objectives, you may have one specific goal that is problematic, but there, in light of all the other objectives and goals in the community plan, there may be other goals that this project does meet and in some way overrides this one. So for instance, if, and I don't, I'm not saying this for certain because I did not review the community plan, the Arden Community Plan, but let's just say there's a, objectives that, you know, says revitalize properties, business properties that aren't in use, or approve uses to reduce homelessness or camping in this area, something like that. And you'd be achieving that goal by approving this, even though it conflicts. You can't always have, and the law, the law acknowledges this, that you can't always achieve and meet every single policy up and down a general plan or a community plan. So there's that. And also, it seems to me, in the case of this particular objective, it's, the goal is to not increase the number of auto sales or kind of auto-related uses. That doesn't necessarily mean you can't approve one at one site. You know, I don't know if overall, in the last 20 to 40 years, there has been a net decrease in auto sales. I know some of them have moved over up to Auburn Boulevard, and maybe there aren't as many still within the Arden Arcade plan area. Maybe some have moved off of Fulton and that area. So I don't have the factual answer, but that's something that you can consider. I'll stop there for now.
So luckily, the Arden Arcade Community Plan is very short. So the goals, I think, are listed on just a couple of pages. And goal number one is to maintain and enhance the distinctive character and identity of the Arden Arcade neighborhood. So I don't think an empty business or an empty lot that has had repeated crime issues helps with the distinctive character and identity of the Arden Arcade neighborhood. So that may be one that we can revise.
Chair Rethel, I'd also recommend looking at item three, goal three, "To work for the rehabilitation and enhancement of the major and minor commercial areas of the community in a phased effort." Talks about improving landscaping.
Good one.
With light, yeah.
So we can go ahead and add those comments to 1B?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the only one that stuck out to me, too, right away. I was like, well, this is inconsistent. But it is inconsistent, so how do we address it? So thank you for your help. Any other concerns with the documents provided, the updated documents provided? Thank you for doing this, staff. We appreciate you creating two sets of documents. I know one set of documents is a lot, so two is very much appreciated in this instance.
Just a point of clarification. Do we need to hear from the applicant if they're okay with the conditions that are listed now in here?
Yeah, that was my next step. So if we could invite the applicant up to weigh in, if you're in agreement with the conditions of approval as updated?
Okay, Brian Holloway, Holloway and Company, and I've been sworn. Yeah, we're, we're fine with the conditions of approval. What I was trying, I apologize for interrupting with staff. What I was suggesting is what other jurisdictions sometime do, so when there aren't conditions of approval specifically written for the commission's approval, what I was suggesting is an intent to approve, and we would come back after staff had a chance to thoroughly prepare findings and conditions. But we're fine with the process that you've all been going through now, and we find the findings and the conditions of approval acceptable.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion. We did make a motion, didn't you?
I did, for these approvals, but I don't know if we need to amend it to specifically talk about these documents with the amended, I guess it's 1B, under conditional use permit?
Let's do that.
Okay, so I'll amend it to approve these, the two draft ordinances or use permit ordinance, draft ordinance and attachment to, with the amended 1B clarifying where it's inconsistent and why we feel that meeting goal three would be imperative.
I think there, yeah, there were two other policies, right, that we found?
Policy one and policy three.
Yeah, so one and three. Goals one and three.
Sorry, goals.
Yeah. It was 1980, we had goals.
And I'll second that with those amendments.
All right. Any further deliberation this evening? Please call the roll.
Commissioners Borha.
Yes.
Rethel.
Yes.
Tatishi.
Yes.
And Wong.
Yes.
And the motion carries as amended.
All right. That concludes item number two this evening. We will move on.
Thank you, Commissioners, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the Planning Director's Report.
Okay, good evening. Is there a scheduling item that comes after the Planning Director's Report?
We've got Planning Director's Report and miscellaneous scheduling items. Feel free to take them both together.
All right, I'll do that. Okay, so once again, Jessica Brant with Planning and Environmental Review. I do want to just touch base really quick with the commission. Four items that we are bringing forward for a recommendation of denial going forward. I think we were trying to make, bringing a, an alternative set of findings and conditions to the hearing work, and I do not feel that it's working. I think there are maybe some errors that we didn't catch in the materials that were brought to you. So I do think moving forward, if we do have something that we're recommending for denial, likely we will bring it forward as just the recommendation for denial. And if the commission does want to move forward with an approval, like Mr. Holloway had mentioned, we probably would ask if it makes sense to do an intent to approve and have us come back with materials. Bill, does that seem appropriate?
We used to do it as a tentative approval or denial, whatever, whatever it might be, and we continue it and then come back after we've all had a chance to really kind of go over all the findings and everything.
Yeah.
It's, that's probably, we're more likely to do that if the final decision is with you guys. This is a recommendation to the board, so it's a little less critical. But yeah, that's, that's a way to handle it. It's not super efficient.
Yeah.
You know?
I think that's why we're trying to make this work. If the commission has a preference, if you want us to continue to try to do a double duty, if you will.
I'll weigh, I'll weigh in that I much prefer what we did tonight because we've expressed our intent, especially, like you said, if it's going to the Board of Supervisors anyway. That's, that's my preference. I've also been on commissions where we just craft new findings up here, right? And I think that's a lot more prone to error than creating two sets of conditions that staff prepared.
For the Planning Commission, I think that trying, trying to craft new findings on the fly is maybe preferable because, I mean, the reality is, no matter, unless you're the BZ, unless you're acting as the BZA, but if you're acting as a Planning Commission, if we do something wrong here, if anybody's going to take issue with it, they have to appeal it to the board, and then everything starts over again. So not to say that what you do here doesn't count for anything, but it, I mean, technically, it's kind of how it works. But as the BZA, there is no appeal to the board. So then, yeah, if it goes to court, the court's looking at what happens here. So then I probably would be, I would want to be very careful about it. But yeah, I think if it's not super complex to, to draft new findings on the fly during the meeting, you know, we can just scratch them out and put them up on the screen, and that becomes part of the record, you know, we'll play it by ear on a case-by-case basis.
If it gets too complex, then we just continue it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is true. That's always an option, right? Yeah. Okay. Okay, then we'll continue to do this. Commissioner Wong?
Oh, I was just going to be difficult and say that I actually liked what Ms. Brant had suggested. I generally am not a fan of, well, I'm used to thinking of it as legislating on the dais. It just can lead to error, or, you know, you don't fully get the opportunity to vet things or think things through. But, you know, obviously, our chair has a preference. I'll defer to what a majority of the commission wants, but that's just kind of how I view things, at least.
I'm supportive of the chair's consent and understand that, Bill, yeah, when it comes to BZA, we probably should table that, or at least not get us in any legal trouble. But I'm okay with the flexibility, or at least if it gets too complicated, that'd be the first one to raise my hand and say we might want to continue.
I concur.
Okay, so then we will continue on the way we have been, likely with the exception of BZA items. And I think for staff, we will probably need some discussion each time on findings. Usually if we're bringing something forward with a recommendation for denial, we have not been able to make findings for approval. So this one was, you know, on the fence. So I think, I think it worked out okay. But, okay, thank you. Moving on to scheduling items, I do want to let the Planning Commission know that there were some errors in the call-in information for the March 27 Planning Commission meeting. And we did get a request or a contest, contested, it was contested.
They called it a Brown Act appeal, which isn't really a thing, but close enough.
So someone did try to call in for one of the items, the Blossom Ridge item, and they were unable to get through to the meeting. So the upshot is that we need to rehear that item. We are going to bring it back to your May 8 meeting. We do have other hearing items that will also need to be reheard because of the, the issue with the call-in information, or the applicants have been given the opportunity to wait 90 days to see if there's another contested request. And if there is no request for a rehearing, then they can move forward with the approval as it is. And so we do have some applicants waiting that out, and we have some that haven't determined which way they want to go yet. So.
The other three items were, they were, you probably don't remember, but maybe you do, the, there were three map extensions, and they were completely non-controversial.
Right.
So, yeah, if the applicants just want to wait it out for another two and a half, two months, two and a half months, no one complains or protests, then they're in the clear. But they could also choose to have it reheard, and we got through those in, like, 10 minutes.
Right. The other one that was a hearing item was the Stockton 76 use permit. That one will be coming back anyway because of the request to have a little bit more outreach. And when it comes back, you will need to hear it as a new item, effectively. I think it's going to be noticed anyway because it was a date uncertain.
It's not a new item, it was continued.
Okay.
So the hearing already, there, a record has been established, you just didn't continue it to a date certain. So that, procedurally, all that means is that notices have to go back out. So everybody that lives near that site is aware of the new hearing date. But it's, yeah, it continues on from the whole conversation about, are there other gas stations around? Are there other, other charging stations, that kind of stuff? Is that also going May 8, or is that later?
No, I, I don't believe we have settled on a date yet. Yeah, I think they're still doing their work. So the May 8 agenda will have, at this point, two items on it. It will be Blossom Ridge and then the Florin 40 map. I believe that's a map extension?
I don't think so.
No, it's not. It's a real map. Yeah, it's from 2017. So you'll have two items there. And then the next two, I'm hoping to get a little more information on attendance for the May 22 and June 12 meetings, because we have six items scheduled for the 22 and six items scheduled for the 12. And so I want to make sure we have quorums for those dates.
I'm good, March 12. Back to kind of the question last thing, my work does require me on the May 22 date to be at a state in Hawaii, so I can call in if that's a valid reason.
Is it, the, the exception is for, if you're on business, for a state or local agency. It's not, so I don't, I don't know why they, they wrote it in the Brown Act. It was written that way, but for some, for some reason, if you're working for a private company and you're on business, the exception doesn't apply.
Yeah, it's a 501(c)(6), so it would not qualify under that code. So I will not be available on the May 22 date.
Okay. Is anyone else aware of absences that date? Or the June 12 date?
The June 12 date, I will be absent.
Okay. Okay.
Truly absent. No request for.
Completely gone. All right.
I want nothing to do.
Okay, that was it for me for scheduling. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to public comments.
No public comments.
All right, we're adjourned at 6:41 PM. Have a good night, everyone.